With the fact that the city of Pecosin did submit the four lane scenario of Victory Boulevard in 2015, which was referred to at that time as House Bill Two. That was from Route 17 to With Creek Road, but unfortunately, that four lane scenario did not receive funding in 2015. So as we moved into 2016, keeping with the four lane scenario, the city of Pecosin and York County worked together and submitted several applications. One application was the four lane scenario for the entire corridor as before, but this time they included four segments, individual segments that comprised the entire corridor. And unfortunately, again in 2016, that four lane scenario across the entire corridor did not receive funding, but one of the four segments did. The segment that was in York County from Route 17 to Route 134. So VDOT, in support of the city of Pecosin and York County, we hired RKNK in late 2017, last year, to take a forensic look at the 2016 Smart Scale data to see whether or not we could make improvements to the Victory Boulevard project and make it more competitive. And what we learned when we started looking at that data was, was out of the applications that were received in the district, about half of them were funded. But more specifically, as we looked at the Victory Boulevard portion, the portion that did not receive funding from Route 134 to With Creek Road, that particular segment received a score of 1.01, and that's why it was not funded, because the score was too low and it just was not competitive. But in comparison, when we looked at the segment of Victory that did receive funding that same cycle, it received a score that was five times greater, a score of 5.36. Now, what's important to recognize about that 5.36 is it was almost the lowest score in the district that received funding. So as we continued looking at the four lane application, what we began to realize is that the overall score comes from the project benefit score divided by the project cost. It is simply that fraction, numerator divided by denominator. And the cost of the project is broken up into $10 million increments. What that means is if you have a $50 million project, 50 divided by 10 is 5. So that denominator, that fraction, is 5. Now, the benefit score of a project, we consider that formula driven. What that means is the project itself either gets points or it doesn't get points. Does it improve safety? Yes or no? Does it have bike and pet accommodations? Yes or no? Does it reduce congestion? Yes or no? That's why we call it formula driven. There's not much we can do, there's not a lot of opportunities, should I say, that we can do as designers to manipulate that benefit score. We certainly can make it as high as possible, but we can't control that score but so much because the project has a purpose and it's scored on that purpose. But what we did notice from 2016 is looking at that data is the best opportunity we have in 2018 in influencing the score is to minimize the project cost, because cost does matter, and the cost of a project is actually more influenceable than the benefits. So we tasked RKNK late last year to look at the four lane option to see, could it become more competitive? And RKNK went to work right away and they started looking at potential cost-cutting measures. We omitted the portion of Victory Boulevard that had already received funding, that saved some money. But we also looked at the remaining corridor of that four lane scenario. We reduced the shoulder width from eight feet to two. We reduced the lane width from 12 feet to 11. We eliminated the raised median. We eliminated the shared use path. We eliminated all asphalt milling overlay through the entire corridor. And we were able to reduce the project cost from 58 million to 44 million, but even that amount of a reduction only yielded a slightly improved score of 1.33. And based upon our look of the 2016 data, that was still not competitive enough. So the walk away from that exercise was the recognition that in our efforts, we had optimized the four lane design to get the highest benefit possible. We also had looked at the cost estimate numerous times, various times, to make sure that we had the lowest costs possible. But even after doing that, the recognition was that a score for the four lane scenario would most likely not be competitive to get funded. So with that recognition, we even looked at a three lane scenario. And even though we cut 20-plus million out of that cost and got it down, it too did not yield a high enough score to be viewed as competitive when we compared that against the 2016 metrics. So our conclusion from this was that we needed to find a way to find a less costly project, but still maintain the benefits of that project. So for 2018, our objective was to prepare the most competitive application possible. And recognizing that the score is based upon the benefits divided by the cost, we had to ask ourselves a question. Is there a way to accomplish the goals of this project without adding additional lanes throughout the entire corridor? But before we answered that question, we had to make sure we redefine what the goals were. Well, we know that the goal is to reduce congestion during peak commuter times. We know that the goal is to provide a second lane out of Pecosin during emergency evacuations. We know that the goal is to try to improve safety, and we know that the goal is to provide bike and pet accommodations. So we took those four goals and we looked at this corridor again, this time only looking at how can we achieve these goals. So what we came up with is what you're going to hear about tonight. And that basically is, we decided, hey, we can meet these goals by adding left turn lanes where appropriate, by making intersection improvements, by adding access management components down on Victory near With Creek Road. Those three components alone improve safety, reduce congestion, and also reduce backups during AM and PM peak times. But then we say, wait, if we add a wide shoulder on one side of the lane, or one side of the roadway, that can be used, even though it's a shoulder, it can be used for an extra lane during emergency evacuations. And if we put the shared use path or the bike and pet accommodations back into the project, then we could reach the fourth goal, which is providing bike and pet accommodations. So we believe that while there's no guarantee to funding, we certainly think that these enhancements will score well and at a much lower cost. So what we're proposing for 2018 is a two lane facility that includes shoulder widening, turn lanes, intersection improvements, access management measures, and a shared use path. And what I'd like to do is bring Owen Perry up from RKNK to walk us through what those scenarios are.
Thank you, Bruce. You hitting down? First scenario, what we determined, working with staff from York County as well as city of Pecosin, and we worked together as a team that each, city of Pecosin and York County would each submit three applications this year for various portions of Victory Boulevard. So Pecosin has submitted on the entire project before, last year. So we went with that again. City of Pecosin, application number one is the entire corridor this year extending from Route 134, since the first part of Victory was funded last year, with just what Bruce said, the intersection improvements, shared use paths, shoulder improvements, and pavement, that pavement width with the shoulders allows for a three lane configuration in an emergency situation, which seemed to be important to everybody using the facility. To walk you through what this means, if you remember the price of the Pecosin application last year was $58 million. This two lane, this two lane scenario comes out to about $13 million, and you could still add some proffers or local funding to that to bring that cost down. We see, as you can recall, the cost is probably one thing we have the most control over to change the score of this project. So, and I'll go through one proffer that we know we're putting into this proposal already. To walk through it from one end to the other, begin the project near Route 134 and add left turn lanes at Bowman Trace, improve the intersection of Big Bethel Road, add left turn lanes at Heaven's Way, add left turn lane at Tuckahoe Trace, intersection improvements at Carries Chapel Road, and then access management, we've got an access management proposal here in Pecosin, right there at Food Line, which could help raise our safety number in that area. So that's one of the reasons we're proposing that. To Bruce's point, this is what the typical section would look like. We've got a wider shoulder already on one side of portions of the roadway, so we're sticking with that and sort of going with an eight-foot shoulder on one side and a two-foot shoulder on the other, giving you an overall pavement width of 34 feet when we're done. And we're going to, so we get the scoring points back for pedestrians and bikes, which is one of the, one of the metrics that gets scored. We are proposing a shared use path, and we sort of envision that instead of being really heavily constructed, it would more lay on the ground out there like alongside the roadway and be fairly low cost, but that will give us some more points as far as the benefit score, the way they score Smart Scale. To go through the improvements as we march down the roadway, just like I described, I'll do this real quickly. Big Bethel Road intersection, we have southbound right turn lane and a eastbound right turn lane, and that improves our traffic condition there, and we don't need to really do much more than that. We have the, we have the Carries Chapel Road intersection improvements. This is, these improvements are also combined with Tuckahoe Trace. We sort of combine those together, so we get a left turn bay at Tuckahoe Trace as well as the, as turn lanes, additional turn lanes and improvements at the intersection. With Creek Road access management, this is where we are going to, we're proposing a median with left turn bays to turn off of Victory Boulevard, but it'd be right turn only coming out of the two parking areas on either side of Victory Boulevard. There have been a number of crashes there in the past, and we can get a safety score out of this area by reducing the potential of those, those types of crossing crashes. In addition to that, we're proposing part of the, part of the package here would be the connection back with Beta and Alphas, which is sort of at the corner behind the Food Line. Those streets were designed to be in the VDOT inventory, and it never got followed, it never was followed through with. So we're proposing that we would make those improvements, connect those roadways up, and it would be an opportunity to, another way over to With Creek Road, right there in the area of Food Line, excuse me. Proposing a left turn lane at Bowman, I'm sorry, at Bowman Trace. That's pretty simple construction. Another left turn lane at Heaven's Way, widening, widening Route 171 Victory Boulevard to provide a left turn out bay, getting those people out of traffic, which backs things up during peak hours. So, application number one, the cost resulting score is approximately 13 million. If you look back at the applications that came in in 2016, that would give you somewhere in that four to five, we can't predict exactly, but we're in that range, which was, those projects got scored and got funded the last time. One point of caution, we cannot predict 2018's score because it's based on the pool of applications that come in in 2018. All we can do is sort of use a rearview mirror and try to do the best we can to get us in the ballpark where we think we have a competitive project. We do anticipate scoring is going to be more competitive. We, we know other municipalities are doing exactly what you're doing here, because their projects didn't get funded as well. So we anticipate, there are a lot of people out there trimming the fat, if you will, off of, off of projects and trying to figure out a new way to, to get their projects funded through this system. So keeping with the previous years, 2016 applications, and I won't belabor this, what we did after that is the other two Pecosin applications, as well as the York County applic, three York County applications are all subsets of the, the main project. So we're sticking with pretty much a two lane roadway, shared use path, but they become smaller projects, almost like how the Route 17 to 134 got funded last year. So under that vein, Pecosin, working with your staff, Pecosin application number two would provide those access management benefits near With Creek Road that we talked about, and carry the shared use path to Carries Chapel Road and, and the shoulders. So you would basically build your section of the project all, all the way to Carries Chapel, but not the intersection improvements at Carries Chapel. We save those for one of the York County improvement, applications. So that gets us, we can't predict the scores on these because you sort of lose some benefit points that are way at the other end of the project. We need to go through the math formulas on those, but I can give you the cost today. That trims that to about a third, a two and a half million dollar project we project right now. And you've seen this map, it just goes from Carries Chapel to With Creek. And application number three from Pecosin would be similar project limits as before. This time, we don't build the shoulders even, but we do get the shared use path and the access management, safety improvements, no shoulder improvements beyond that area. That project would be about one and a half million dollars and would still retain the pedestrian bike points that we're going to get and so forth. Yes, sir?
If I could clarify, the shoulder improvements for the entirety of the project are still there, it's just the Pecosin portion, the shoulder improvements wouldn't pick up until you got to the Carries Chapel intersection.
Yes.
So they're still there for the majority of the egress corridor, just not in our section.
It helps Pecosin, but it helps Pecosin outside. Yes, if you're asking, do York, the York County proposals all have shoulders on them? So yes, we know it was important from Carries Chapel to the, to the west to, to maintain the shoulders, so all of their sections have the shoulders on them.
Very good, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Uh huh. We understand that, that would be pretty important for maybe emergency ingress and egress. So quickly go over the York County applications. Application number one picks up at 134 and goes through Carries Chapel Road. So this is their whole section that gets them from 134 all the way down to where it would meet up with your project, with shoulders, with the shared use path. That comes in at 11 and a half million dollars. So it's sort of like their whole portion of the project plus that, this price includes the actual intersection improvements at Carries Chapel. You've seen the map. Application number two trims a little bit off trying to reduce costs, so it picks up at, at 134, but only carries the improvements through Big Bethel and stops near Heaven's Way, just to try to potentially have a smaller package that could still retain some of the score benefit. That reduced, what I say before, that was about a seven and a half million dollar job for the whole thing, or 11, I'm sorry, 11 and a half million. This, this takes the price down to that segment of four, about four and a half million. So you can see they're trying to whittle, we're trying to whittle it, smaller segments, much like the one that got funded in 2016. So that gets you to Heaven's Way, and then York County application number three, another subset of the main application, picks up around Heaven's Way and takes you through the Carries Chapel Road intersection, once again tying into Pecosin number two with the shoulders and everything. So either of those projects would tie in, any of the three York County projects that they're doing on their own would tie into either of your second or third applications, but with the shoulders, we're hoping we would get the whole thing funded with shoulders and with the shared use path. So that pretty much goes through the various packages we've worked with your team and your staff on, and we're here to answer any questions, right Bruce?
I've got one, just one question at a high level, and that, when you said something about the bike and pedestrian lanes not being, or just being a hard pack, are you talking about a thin layer of asphalt, or what are you talking about?
They would be designed to standards, but we're, usually if like a VDOT was building a roadway like this, we'd probably build it up at roadway level, but, but you've got a nice little sort of park setting there along Victory Boulevard for a good portion of it, so we would sort of see that maybe being further down there towards that, that little creek or ditch that's down there, maybe missing, meandering some and missing trees and trying to keep costs down and be maybe.
But it's, it is a hardscape, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's, that was my question.
We're, we're budgeting full pavement, typical VDOT trail, just not doing all the earthwork and buildup that you'd normally find, maybe trying to do it low, low density kind of.
Got it. Thank you. All right, buddy.
Unfortunately, I know more about this project than I probably should. I worked for the company that did the grading and clearing when it was first built, so I know firsthand all the missteps that were made when they decided to only build half of that road. We got mistreated in many ways by not doing the whole project, but what scares me, to me, this is like putting a half a Band-Aid on something, and, and nothing, I mean, I don't mean to make little of what y'all have done. I know what you're up against, I know we've got to do something, but this just, I hope this isn't the end-all to this and that you abandoned the right of way that's all been built, it's been put to subgrade. I mean, if there was ever a ready shovel, shovel-ready project, that's it. And it has just bugged me to death that we never, ever have been able to get it past first base.
I understand that. I really, I think what we've, we've tried to do is, you know, we have a new climate that we're working in today in Smart Scale, and that's the measure by which we are pursuing funding. And we've gone through two cycles, and we're just trying to find the most competitive package we can put together to real, to really meet the goals of the project. I don't disagree with what your concern is, I think it's valid, but I think if we look at what the project goals are, we're accomplishing that, and we're trying to do it as costly as we can to try to increase the success of funding in 2018.
I don't think, you know, I got ready to.
I just hope this doesn't put the mindset of VDOT and the rest of the world that, okay, this is it, we've done it, we're going to walk away from it. You've got the right of way, it's just mind-boggling.
I know, it's frustrating, but, but I think the general tone here is this. We've tried tw, basically twice, nothing. I'm not saying that we're going to stop pushing to do Victory Boulevard the correct way, and I'm not hearing that you're going to ever abandon the right of ways.
That's correct.
So, so we're basically stepping towards, at least this will take the edge off. But I agree with you, you know, and, and I'm not saying that, you know, Pecosin shouldn't go back out and, and say, you know, how can we lump this with other funding? But at least it, it starts to answer the mail, and if we can at least get a improvement, it's better than what we've received.
Something's better than nothing, and, and this is something, and, and I just would hate to think that somebody in VDOT is going to say, oh, it's done, we're never going to talk about doing it the right way ever again.
No, I think as long as we're around, we'll keep talking about doing it the right way.
One thing, one thing I would like to note, when we've been developing these, these concepts all the way through, we know you have an eye on a four lane facility that looks like a boulevard or something like that. So we're trying to do things that you wouldn't have to maybe rebuild later, like the shared use path. We're trying to go with that with investing as little money as possible. That's something that could be easily dug up and made, a road made where it is in the future. We're putting no curb and gutter and underground pipes out there, you know, with a drainage system, just what we need, no more, so you wouldn't have to rip all of that out if you did that kind of construction in the future. So we've tried to make this, of course, in the intersection areas where we're doing those improvements, there's going to be some islands and some curb and stuff there in the median, but we've tried to make this as a low, lowest impact possible and give you options in the future.
And to summarize that, none of these proposed improvements are going to preclude that future widening, should we be successful in getting that in.
Yes, first, thank you very much for what you've done, and you put the presentation together very well. I just have a question, and it's a very simple question. When we talked about a four lane project, in reality, it's a two lane project because we already have two lanes, and the land on the north side of Victory Boulevard is already mostly prepared all the way from one end to the other. So was it ever tried to be sold as a two lane project rather than a four lane project? We have two already.
Well, I think you're just, I think, maybe I'm hearing it wrong, but you're expanding the two lanes into three with your, with your area outside, even though it's not a normal travel lane. That's, so it's, it's basically within the same two lane structure, but you're going to have a wider apron on one side.
No, I was talking about, and when, and we were talking originally about the four lane concept, okay? Because there already exists two lanes.
Sir, yes, sir.
So we're, we're talking about two lanes, not four.
In response to your question, I, I can tell you, we, the previous applications that I've seen, I, 2015 and 2016, they were total rebuilds, giving you a nice concrete, you know, raised median grass. It wasn't, it never got looked at to just put two lanes next to the existing road that's out there. I can tell you from our drill down and just looking at a three lane scenario and how much one lane of pavement costs for that corridor, we are not seeing where that would even be competitive just because of how the scoring works on this, on this corridor. And there's other congestion ranks very high in the scoring in the Hampton Roads District. It's a little different in some of the other districts, and there are a lot of projects out there that can demonstrate a out there that can demonstrate a lot of congestion in the Hampton Roads District, as you can appreciate. So you're up against that when we're competing against every project in the, in the district.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Okay. Again, thank you, you know, I can tell a lot of work went into this, and we appreciate that. Appreciate the, the way that you went about it to try and, and improve the scores. I, I'm, I share Buddy's sentiments that, you know, we were frustrated by the scoring system, but it is the situation that we've been given to work within. So our best choice politically out here is to influence the decisions that, that VDOT is governed by. So, but what you've done here, and appreciate all the work, and I appreciate the staff feeding into it. One thing I'll point out to, to council here, Randy, correct me if I get this wrong, but the alpha-beta connection is something that we have money in the bank for. That is a proffered, or we, we collected that funding from...
We have $42,000 that we will put towards this project, which was paid by the, the land, the owner of the shopping center to assist with the running Beta Street to its terminus, so that it could eventually connect with Alpha's extended.
Which is something we've been talking about for, geez, 15, 20 years. But we do have that, that money, so it's not, there may be some additional appropriation, but at least you've got that much towards that, right? So I just wanted council to understand that piece, and it does help score on the safety. That's the reason that it's in there. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it. Yeah, we're going to talk about another intersection. You want to say it, Randy?
So we will bring back a resolution seeking your formal concurrence with the applications in the month of July. That is a requirement of smart scale as well, and we didn't want to have the work session and put the resolutions on at the same meeting. Wanted to give you an opportunity to ask your questions before, before we ran out of time.
Very good. So what, so the next step is that, and that's the next meeting, and when is the application? Should I ask, well, VDOT was here?
Early August.
Early August.
August first.
So that'll give us time to do it, and just like some of the other grants, you're in front of that.
Yes.
As far as the preparation of it.
Right, it's a, it's a very long application, and luckily we've been through it once, and just to make another point. The last time we did this, we did actually go out and photograph city vehicles on the grass strip to show that we had a level cleared area ready for a road. And what that did is it did get the cost down the last go-around, but unfortunately, as they were saying, it's, it's not enough in this particular type of scoring scenario.
Okay. All right. The next work session item is one that we've talked about with councils passed. I'm not sure this council's ever really had a chat about it, but this is the Pecosin Avenue, Little Florida Road, and Leyden Way intersection improvement options. And the reason that this has become, has come back up on our radar is the, you know, there is at least a potential to sell some, sell property there at the intersection, that is IDA property.
Yes, sir.
And so it really is about making sure that we protect and not necessarily overburden that, that, that lot into something that's workable. So that's why it's back before us. It's not just the mayor's re-energizing this thing and let's go do this, but that's, that's why it's here, so.
Thank you, I'll pick up from there.
Go ahead.
So council members will recall, some of the very senior council members, that this has been discussed since almost the year 2000, and I'm sure before that too, but the, but some of the schematics that you see included in your package today go back that far. And at that time, council looked at three options that were provided by our consultant and follow that away for future consideration. And then approximately 2010 or 11, we had a conversation, about 2010, the council had provided guidance to the EDA to move forward to market for resale the, the teen center property. And as part of that conversation, the EDA came back and said, okay, we heard you, loud and clear, we need some help on, on understanding what your intersection preference is so that they, we wouldn't have to go back and acquire a piece of property that we had previously owned. Council looked at the three options at that time, was not ready to make a decision, so said, reserve the largest footprint necessary for the largest land area option, which was the traffic circle, which I believe is option three or scenario three. So now we're here as a staff, sort of with, with two soft objectives here. One is to see if, in fact, we could narrow down, potentially to one, the preferred application, because that will help inform the EDA's land sale of the, of the...
Teen Center.
Teen Center. And also, if you do, in fact, get to the point that you're comfortable moving to one, then we can spend some time over the next year refining that estimate in anticipation for its inclusion in the, in an upcoming CIP, its possible inclusion in the phase-two borrowing, its possible application for estate revenue sharing grant, which is a different pot of VDOT money than we've typically applied for. It's a 50/50 match program, so all of that, we would be in position to, to make some decisions on our U-Wood in about a year, if we were going to do any of those things. So it would allow us about a year to mature the options. Garrett Fagin's council members in our engineering department took the lead at my request in working with Alan to develop essentially an option four, which had not been previously discussed, and we could, I'd like to allow him an opportunity to walk us through all four of those options. And obviously, there's pros and cons associated with each one of these, but the factors that always go through our mind is the amount of property from private citizens we would need to acquire, cost obviously, and, and time. So Garrett will give you his pros and cons through those filters as well as a couple of others. Garrett?
Very good. Good evening. Can you hear me? Yep. Okay.
The people at home need to hear you, so make sure you...
Okay. All right. The engineering department was tasked with looking at possible design alternatives for the future of the Shipwreck Island intersection. The old Kublin's study recommendations were reviewed, and a fourth one was developed by the engineering department. All right. The intersection has long been a point of concern for many Pecosin residents. Issues at the intersection include the unusual offset alignment of Pecosin Avenue and Leyden Way entrances, the limited sightlines on Little Florida Road, vehicles speeding, and concerns about accidents at the intersection. With these concerns in mind, in 2002, there was an intersection improvement study done by, for the city by Kublin's Transportation Group. In this study, they identified three, three design alternatives for the future of the intersection. These designs were done 16 years ago, so, and they're likely not up to current day standards, and would need to be redesigned in order to comply with current day standards. The engineering department also designed a fourth conceptual design. And this is the existing layout. As you can see, there's Leyden Way and there's Pecosin Avenue. The entrances are offset, and this curve right here limits the sightlines on the road. And now here's the first Kublin's alternative. As you can see, Leyden Way is shifted to the east, and while Pecosin Avenue is shifted to the west, and the curve is straightened slightly. And the, the current right-hand turn from eastern Pecosin Avenue to western Pecosin Avenue is kept in place, and this is repeat, and also Black Oak Court would be extended out to Leyden Way's new location, which Black Oak Court is right here. And then the pros for this alternative is that it maintains the familiar traffic pattern for drivers. It removes the offset configuration of Pecosin Avenue and Leyden Way and creates a standard four-legged intersection, and it also improves the sightlines for drivers. The negatives however are that, according to Kublin's, by straightening out the road, speeding is expected to increase, and also right-of-way would be required from numerous property owners. And here's alternative two. It's similar to alternative one in that it creates a four-legged intersection right here, except instead of moving Leyden Way to the east, Black Oak Court is extended east and moves upwards to line it up with Pecosin Avenue, which has been shifted to the west. And here is, and instead of the current right-hand turn lane from eastern Pecosin Avenue to western Pecosin Avenue, a standard right-hand turn lane is introduced on Pecosin Avenue. For this, the pros for this design are the safety improvements and the traffic calming measures like the right-hand lane and the curve on Black Oak Court, Leyden Way, and it's also less expensive than alternative one, and it has better sightlines. The cons would be that right-of-way acquisition is required from numerous property owners, and it also has the, a high amount of impervious surface. And here's alternative three, which is a roundabout. Leyden Way is shifted to the east, and the roundabout will replace the current intersection with four entrances for each of the four legs of the intersection. The pros for this is that it has the greatest traffic calming effects. Cars will have to slow down to come into the roundabout, and, and it also provides possible landscape, community landscape features similar to the current median there called Shipwreck Island. And for the cons, roundabouts often require a learning curve for residents. Right-of-way acquisition requi- a significant amount of right-of-way acquisition required from five different property owners. It would require the city to secure roadway access for two of the lots in the northeast corner, as they would, their driveways currently would come out right in the middle of the roundabout, and it also has the highest cost of any of the, of the three Kublin's alternatives. And then for our design, we looked at what could possibly be done without acquiring any additional right-of-way, and this is what we came up with. In this design, Leyden Way will be shifted to the east, and this will create an S-shaped curve to line up with the southbound lane of Pecosin Avenue. The blue lines on the screen are the current property lines. The red line is a hypothetical right-of-way line for the road. The black line is the edge of pavement, and the yellow line is the center line of the road. This design is different from the Kublin's design alternatives in that it only involves moving Leyden Way. The main pro of this alternative is that it requires no right-of-way acquisition. It also does not impact the teen center building, and it all, it creates a four-way, a simple four-legged intersection, and it's also a fairly familiar traffic pattern for drivers. The cons are that there's no traffic calming measures, the curve comes close to the teen center building, and that speeding and other sightline issues do remain. It, it only really addresses the unusual alignment problem. And then the city staff is seeking the council's guidance on which direction they would like to move forward with, or if they would like to move forward at all. The next steps would be some preliminary engineering and design along with a cost estimate, and to begin looking at possible sources of funding for the project. Questions?
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Questions? I really like what they put together.
I like, I like that fourth alternative if we could do one other thing.
What's that?
And I can't tell you how many times people have taken that traffic movement from Pecosin Avenue on, or I guess it's, yeah, Pecosin Avenue, back on to Pecosin Avenue with that island there. The sight distance is so bad, and you don't know what the person's going to do turning left, or what the person's going to do coming out of Leyden Way. If that were made a traditional right-turn lane, I think we would have improved that intersection more than anything in the world. Get rid of that island and just make it a right-turn lane.
You're talking about coming down from, from the church?
Yes. Move, heading west on Pecosin Avenue, and you've got that little, nice little curve that takes you back on to the rest of Pecosin Avenue. I know there's a yield sign there, but, but nobody pays any attention to it. And there've been so many near accidents because they don't look to the left. You've got to look really hard left to see somebody turning left off of either, either going straight out of Leyden Way when we straightened out, or turning left off of Little Florida on to Pecosin Avenue. And if you were, if you had to make the right turn, you'd be looking right at it.
Yeah, I understand, and I, I think, so my question on, on option four, because you said something about, you know, brought the right-of-way close to the teen center, but it doesn't, right now, it doesn't impact the potential sale of the teen center. Is there a real safety issue there? That's 25 mile per hour speed zone, right?
I, that, I, yeah, it would be a pretty slow speed zone, so I wouldn't anticipate a huge safety concern.
I like, I like what you've done with alternative four, personally. That's, doesn't mean that's a vote of council, but I like what you've done. I would improve the approach to it with some signs similar to what we put on Bunning Lane, that starts to control the speed in that area when you do, when you do a major improvement, something to, to slow the cars down as they're, as they're approaching that particular intersection. It does away with the traffic circle that did that, but I think the signage might do the same thing. And then it opens us up that if an intersection ever grows so large, we could signalize it, right? But right now, I think this might just do it. So I really like and I really appreciate the work that y'all put into that, okay? Good thinking there. That's all I've got on it. Bud, you got anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things on, on the option four, okay? I agree with Buddy, you know, that it would be good to have a right turn, dedicated right-turn lane coming to the right there off of Pecosin Avenue onto Little Florida Road, and I agree with what you said, Gene, but what about the possibility of making a right-turn lane off of Leyden Way, going down toward Pecosin Avenue the other way? The land is obviously there, it wouldn't be a big issue, and I don't think it'd be a big cost improvement. And the one other, one other comment was on option two. Option one said it was increased speeding. If you look at the option two, you've really got a nice straight shot through there. If you had any speeding increase, option two is going to be the biggest speeding thing, and that's not mentioned on option two at all.
So I guess I'm, and, let me speak for y'all, but I think what I'm hearing is that we would, our direction as staff would probably be to more fully develop alternative four as a real potential. Looking at all the, all of the factors, you know, when Randy said it'd be like a year before they came back, obviously, I'm thinking, you know, to do things like that, you know, your sources of income to, to take care of an intersection that has always been problematic for, one, you've got the sale of the property. Two, even if you remove Shipwreck Island, it seems like we're opening up a pretty good chunk of property that used to be a road that could be a, something of, of, an attraction, not an attraction, it's not large enough for a pocket park, I don't think, but it's, you know, you could move something there that's informational, that's just a pretty feature, you know, those types of things. Same thing that we were talking about, had we done a circle that you put in the middle of it, you could put something there.
The Shipwreck could move over to the right-hand corner coming out of Leyden Way.
Could be a, a bigger ship.
Yeah. There could be a bigger ship. Larger wreck.
I got a possible candidate for the ship.
So did I get that right? Are you okay with that, Janet?
Yeah, I'm okay. I didn't like, I mean, if we already have a speeding issue, option...
One and two.
Option one and two are just going to make it worse.
I agree. Okay, everybody good?
All right. We will, we will proceed then to mature option four, taking into account some of the comments we've heard tonight, and see how we might be able to incorporate them, at least as alternatives, like four A, four B. We'll bring them back to you at the appropriate time.
Let me just ask a far-fetched question. We just got a brief from VDOT where they said, "Safety improvements measure in." This is kind of the same corridor, it's the same route number, isn't it?
Yes.
What, if, if we improve the safety of this intersection by doing something like this, does that help them in their safety scoring?
It's not contiguous to the project.
Well, neither's off on Beta Street.
Gene, Gene, I did notice one thing.
It's still, it's still the same route number, that's all I'm saying, just.
I actually think I asked a variance of this question at one point. And you're right, Alpha Street Extended and Beta Street are not exactly on the route, but they're connected to it, and they, they relate to the traffic control project that they want to do in front of the Food Lion entrance. So we thought, at least I thought, that access management control there was good, but it might cause some problems. Therefore, having another access way around that shopping center would help those people wanting to go right on the times of the day where it might have a little bit more congestion. But also, should we have a problem at that intersection, it gives us a way to route around it, a much, a much easier way.
I was just saying, keep your, keep your mind open as you're dealing with VDOT in the future, same route number. Not saying that it helps, just, but it can hurt. And the, the other thing is, I would like to see us start talking around that neighborhood a little bit, so they're not so surprised that is, that there's a discussion ongoing, right? That, you know, this option would impact five property owners, this option would do this. It's not too early to start letting them know that the city is thinking about that and get their, get their thoughts.
This option would not require any additional property.
Correct. That's what I understood. Except for what the city already owns. Right?
Gene, I did notice also in none of this literature do you refer to option three as the Buddy Green traffic circle.
I know.
You had to bring that up, didn't you? I was sitting here biting my tongue, and you had to bring it up.
But it seems to address the Buddy Green traffic circle in a way that he can, he can live with.
So based on council's conversation, we will work to formally move that blue line to at least get it out of the building.
Yes.
And because it's a land transfer between two public entities, it doesn't, all it will require is a simple approval from you at the right time, as opposed to a public hearing, which is required when you're transferring or selling property to a private entity.
Okay. It looks to me like you can substantially improve the blue line on the building side. Is that right? We're not trying to reserve property on that, around the corner.
That's, unless you want option three.
Okay. This might solve the Buddy Green traffic circle issue. Okay.
They didn't do it anyway.
All right. That's it?
Yes, sir.
That's it for the work session. We'll be back with you, for those that are joining us from home, in about five minutes. Thanks.
Well, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't let that go.